Come to learn, learn Jesus and learn of him. And of course, what that means for us as his children, as his disciples, as his followers, as his friends. So let's just begin to exalt Christ in our hearts. Let's begin to exalt Christ in our hearts. What that means is, you know, if you have been distracted, you have been, I mean, it doesn't mean that you're not doing any other thing, but if you have been, if you had, if you had your heart set somewhere else. If you've had your mind set somewhere else, you know. And if you've had your affection before now set on something else that is not Jesus. Begin to repent and begin to set your hearts on the Lord, begin to set your mind on the Lord. Begin to um exalt Christ in your heart, begin to fix your gaze on Jesus. Begin to fix your gaze on Jesus intentionally, begin to fix your gaze on Jesus. It will be a waste of time. You know, if you join Bible study tonight and your heart is not here. It will be a waste of time if you come to learn of and learn Jesus. And your heart is not here, your heart is not here, um it will be a waste of time. So this moment begin to turn your heart back to Jesus, fix your gaze on Christ, fix your gaze on Christ, fix your gaze on Christ. Fix your gra- your gaze on Christ, begin to pray that the Lord be exalted in your heart. Because that's the only way that you can truly, 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 truly see him. That's the only way that your heart can really burn, you know, when he starts to speak to you. So begin to pray that the Lord will um be exalted in your heart, begin to pray that the Lord is exalted in your heart, even right now. Wherever you are, I mean, no matter what you're doing right now, begin to pray that the Lord is exalted in your heart. In your space as well, that the Lord is exalted, that the Lord is exalted, that the Lord is exalted. Every distraction, um you know, you bring them to the authority of Christ. Every voice, every um nudge, everything, everything that wants to exalt yourself, a belief in the love of God, in our midst tonight, in our hearts tonight. We bring them under authority, we bring them under subscription. We bring them under the lordship of Jesus and we declare that Christ is exalted in our hearts, in the name of Jesus. We declare that Christ is exalted in our hearts, in the name of Jesus. We declare that Christ is exalted in our hearts. In the name of Jesus, Christ is exalted in our hearts, in the name of Jesus. Oh, this moment should all the spirit be asked that we fix our gaze on Jesus one hundred percent. That you fix our gaze on Jesus, that you fix our gaze on Jesus, our spirits are quickened. We understand, we see, we see, we see, we see, we know, we know, we know. In the name of Jesus, as it was in the days when Jesus was resurrected and he was speaking with the disciples and their hearts turned, their hearts burned within them. It would be the same experience for us in the name of Jesus. As the word of God is alive, sharp, living, it would be so, as the word of God is alive, sharp, living, it would be so in our spirit, in the name of Jesus. Oh, thank you Father, thank you Father, thank you Father. Thank you Father, thank you Father, not be thank you, not be thank you. Not be thank you, for in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. For in Jesus' name we pray. Amen, amen. Amen. Okay, so um who can remind us where we stopped last week? Who remembers and can remind us? Um so nobody remembered, where, I think you want to go around and look at your notes. It's fine, there's an open, there's an open test. If you um remember and you cannot come off this, just, just say hi in the comments, in the just say hi in the um on the group, so that I know that um maybe you're about to type or something. I think people's night talks are really making me mad of the call. So nobody remembers, nobody remembers when we stopped last week. Hey. Hey. Who are shouting? Bala, where did we stop last week? Bala, can you hear me? Yeah, Huda, I see your struggles. Sorry, I see your struggles though, I see you coming up, coming on the call and um uh what's the word, and going off, Bala, Bala. Thank you, Bala, thank you, Psalm two to three. Okay, so I wrote that Psalm two verse three, that's where you stopped. Great, okay, that's fine, that's fine, you can always type. Um, okay, so I know we stopped at Psalm two verse three, but what was the, what was our concluding, um what's the word now, concluding thoughts, concluding learning, what, what was, or what was the highlights for you? What did you learn from, you know, the session last week? Um if anyone else wants to go, you know, instead of Bala, Abidata with Bala. Please go ahead, um what, what was the highlight for you last week, what did you learn? You know, if you remember, if I go back to your notes, if you remember, um what we, the class last week, or the meeting last week, I'm not going to say the class. The meeting last week, what, what's the um what's the highlight for you? What do you remember from last week's class? I mean, you already know by now that every time we gather, we'll be meeting, we'll be, we'll be re-recapping. That did not come out well, but yeah, we'll be doing um revision soon, yeah. Um, Timmy Lane, what was the highlight for you? Recapping, hmm. That did not come out well, but yeah, we'll be doing um revision soon, yeah. Um, Timmy Lane, what was the highlight for you last week? What did you learn? Um, Esther, I know that you were, I can't remember if you were, if you were around last week, but when you are done, you know, bathing the baby, you come and tell us what you, what your highlight was from last week's session. You don't even have my answers because the replay was available, so. Yeah, whether you are available or not, you come and tell us what you learned last week. Um, Omajus Nola, I see that you keep going on and off, I'm guessing into your network. Kai, we are rest, we are rest from twitting networks in Jesus' name. Okay, so um Omajus Nola, like you can type, please let me know what your highlight from last week's session was. Um, what you learned, you know. Uh, okay, so Bala has, Bala has talked. Um, Timmy Lane. Okay, so Bala says, um whatever the devil is doing is a part of God's plan, hmm. Like all the pain and disappointment is a way to prepare you for what God has for you in the future. That's very um that's very profound. However, what I mean to put it in context, um whatever the devil is planning for a child of God that is in the will of God. Because sometimes the devil can actually affect you outside, yeah, affect somebody, not you. Outside um what God's plans are, but for a child of God who is, who is in the will of God, who is who is on the path that God has set out for him or her. Whenever the devil plans, it will be in God's hands, so yeah, but yeah, very, very true, um. The pains and disappointments, they are preparations for what is set to come, so. Very, very true, thank you. Um, Timmy Lane, you cannot discuss. You cannot discuss. Um, who else are running off code? Okay, Esther is, Esther is bathing baby. I feel like I will not hear, I will not, you will not hear the last of it till we finish this meeting. Okay, I can see that Omajus Nola is typing. Okay, so um Timmy Lane, are you able to come off mute? Are you able to read for us? I can't remember if you um answered me the other time. Okay, so Omajus Nola says, um the parable of the talents was a highlight for me. The master wasn't interested in the numbers when the servants, when the servant, he gave the one talent and brought it back without profit, rather, he was interested in the servant making good use of the talent. Yes, thank you, thank you. I mean, you reminded us because I never remember that part. So yeah, thank you. Yes, yes, profits, profit to God is not, is not, not, I mean, not that numbers are not important to God. Um, they are, but the core of his measurement, when it comes to us being profitable, us being fruitful. Is not necessarily in the numbers, but in the expression of what we have, um, um. It, it is not in the how many people you can gather, you know, the Lord is not being um contest game of, game of numbers, you know. Um, numbers are important because it means we are reaching more people. But if at the cost that there is no expression of the actual gift that the Lord has placed on these other worlds, it has not become a game of who has the most numbers, you know. Then that is the path to failure. So yes, very important. Um, it, it is not in the numbers, but rather the expression of the people of God on our inside. So yeah, thank you very much, Omajus Nola. Okay, I see that Huda is typing. This is your network there, you will go out fast and pray, so that arrest it, sorry. Because I just need two more people to, you know, share their learnings, um before we carry on, two more people. Um, and if you're watching the replay and you get to this point, before you hear, before you hear me read the next two more people's responses, you can go ahead and type yours in the comment section here on YouTube. Um, I may not be able to read it because it's not going to be in real time, but it counts anyway. So yeah, go ahead and type, you know, what you learned from last week's session, um before we carry on. So I'll wait for two more people, um and then we'll go into today's session. I'm, I, I hope Timmy Lane is okay though. Because you've not responded to whether or not you can reach for us. Okay, okay, um. Okay, Timmy Lane, if you could just go ahead and tell us what you, if you type, I don't know if you can type, sorry, I don't know if you can type. Um, Huda, I, okay, I, I think I'm seeing your message. Um, I'm saying that, you know, tell us something that you learned from last week's session. What was your highlight from last week's session? Okay, Timmy Lane, I see your message before, um. Yeah, so Huda, I don't need to can, is Huda still on this call? No, she's not, okay. Okay, I think I'll just carry on, um, you know, while we're thinking of the season of the fourth year. To freedom. Okay, so um we'll be continuing, you know, in the Psalms. Um, today, we're reading, we're continuing in Psalms two, or with Psalms two. I feel like continuing in the Psalms is more appropriate, because it's like a, you know, it's like a pattern, a way of life, literally. So yeah. Okay, my other device just went out. Um, please confirm if you can still hear me. Do you hear me?
All right, thank you, Timmy. Okay, so I was saying that, um, you know, we'll be continuing um in Psalms, so with the book of Psalms. Um, and I was asking if anyone knows what Psalms. If anyone has had the, the nudge, the nudge rather, to um find out what Psalms mean. Um, but that's by the way, you know, if, if during this conversation you find it, please just post it. Um, and let it be a learning moment for us. So yeah, we'll be continuing with Psalms two. Um, and excuse me, and so I'm going to be reading um NKJV, I'm going to be reading NKJV and also the Strong's definition. Um, from last week, if you remember, you know, we're having, we're, we're doing a lot of reference reading. Where um the verses in this chapter, um that were used in in future, like in the New Testament, so we're, we're reading the references, um and connecting the dots really. Um, and we will continue that today because it is very important for us to see how prophecy is um or foretelling of the future, how they were fulfilled eventually. Um, so that we can see how the Bible is really a cohesive, coherent, you know, word of, of, of life. Okay, so let me just do a quick recap so that we don't pick up from verse four. So from verse one to three that we read last week. Why do the nations rage and the people plot a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, let us break their bonds in pieces and cast away their cords from us. Now, we're going to be reading verse six today, um. Yes, verse six. I think, uh, let me try and remember if we, okay, yes. So just in verse six, oh, I'm sorry, verse four, we're going to be starting with verse four today. So he who sits in heavens, in the heavens shall laugh. He who sits in the heavens shall laugh. Please hold on. Yes, so, sorry, what was I, um, um, so verse four, he who sits in the heavens shall laugh. The Lord shall hold them in derision. So I want us to, um, you know, open our, open our Bibles to once you, if I call a Bible verse, a reference Bible verse, once you get there, just paste it on the group so that you can um use that as a, as a cue, so that somebody is there and we can read it. Okay, so um he who sits in heaven shall laugh, the Lord shall hold them in derision. Remember that we were coming from a question, a, a wonderment. The person that was writing this Psalm was wondering, uh, which I think is David, actually. Because the way, actually, it's his David, because the reference is in the future, told, confirmed that it is David, so yeah. Um, he that sits, or rather, why do the nations rage? And the person was wondering, was just in wonderment. Why do the nations rage and the people plot a vain thing? Or why do people imagine a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed. And they were saying, you know, let us break their bonds in pieces and let, and cast away their cords from us. Now, that is what the people have imagined, that is the vain thing that the people have, are plotting. Or the kings of the earth, that's what they gathered together to think about, to plot, to imagine, to um plan. Now, David is saying, he who sits in heaven's laugh, there's a way NLT puts it, is he in NLT or KJV now? Let me just quickly see, um, yes, NLT, but the one who rules in heaven laughs, the lost coughs at them, you know, um. Yeah, but the one who rules in heaven laughs, the lost coughs at them. Let me see if KJV has a difference. Okay, well, KJV is very close to NLT. He that sits in the heavens shall laugh and the Lord shall have them in derision. I feel like we should find dictionary meaning of that derision, because my mind is like something, is like, is like, um when somebody is making a, a flurry of themselves, you know. It's like, okay, just be, just be fully yourself. I, I feel like that's what it means, but and intentionally, you do not, you know, you know, read these verses ahead so that we can get understanding in the moment. Yes, so we can get understanding in the moment together. So, um, anyway, um. Where will we now? Where will we now? Where will we now? Yes, so verse four, I want us to open to, um. Sorry, excuse me. I want us to open to Psalm thirty seven verse thirteen. Who can get there first should please help us to pull, paste each on the group so that we can take that as a cue that somebody is there and we can read together. Psalm thirty seven verse four, verse thirteen. Is anyone there yet? Thank you, Dami, thank you, Dami. Okay, yes, and thank you for posting NKJV so that, because I most likely be reading NLT a lot. Um, but your NKJV would help us, you know, throw a balance through. Okay, so, um. Um, Psalm thirty seven versus thirteen in NKJV says, you know, the Lord laughs at him for he sees that his day is coming. See, I feel like they are clues. I don't know if you've ever solved a puzzle before and, um, or a, what do they call that now? Um, oh, Big Bang Theory, where are you when I need you? Um, there's this scavenger hunt, you know, that, that, um. The friends in Big Bang Theory will usually solve or go on. And they're like clues and, you know, pieces to an answer, somewhere, 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 somewhere. And at the end of everything, um, there would be a, a, a treasure that you are supposed to find at the end of the clue. I feel like that's how the Bible is sometimes. You know, you read something in one verse and then you see a reference somewhere and then you go and read it and you're like, okay, so let me go back to the old in the, in the first place, the, the preceding verses, and you're like, oh, 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 okay, now I see, okay, okay. This is, oh, yeah, I, I, sorry, I get that a lot. So, um, now let's read Psalm thirty seven. You know, from, um, from verse one, actually, I'll be quick. Sorry, hold on, um. Okay, sorry, um, there was an emergency outside, I had to be sure that it wasn't, um, as bad as I was imagining. Okay, so where were we? Um. Yes, so, uh, I think I was, we're trying to read Psalms thirty seven from verse one. Um, so, don't worry, it's a Psalm of David, by the way. So that's, that's to tell you that it was David that wrote this verse as well, this chapter two. So don't worry about the wicked or envy those who do wrong, for like grass, they just, they shall, they soon fade away. Like spring flowers, they soon wither. Trust in the Lord and do good, then you will live safely in the land and prosper. Take delight in the Lord and he will give you the desires of your heart. Commit everything you do to the Lord, trust him and he will help you. By the way, I just felt an, um impression in my spirit to explain that verse four. I know that we, we must have said it again and again here on, you know, some of the calls that we've had. But um that's Psalm thirty four verse, thirty seven verse four, you know, take the light in the Lord, um, and he will give you your heart's desires. I think in KJV says, um, delight yourself in the Lord and he will give you the desires of your heart, you know. And um the understanding that the Lord gave me for that verse is that when you, um when you delight yourself in the Lord, when you begin to allow the Lord please you. I'm, I'm trying to find a better, a better way to put it. When you begin to allow, um, the things of the Lord give you pleasure. You know, when you begin to delight yourself in the Lord, in his word, in his presence, you know, spend time with the Holy Spirit, fellowship with the Lord. He will begin to give you what your heart should desire. So that verse does not mean that if you, if you will spend time with the Lord and you are desiring to me and then he will give you to me, and that's all it means. What it means is, um, as you spend time with the Lord, you know, he'll begin to fine tune your heart to what you should desire, and that's what brings you into his will. And if you remember what Bala, you know, shared earlier, um, that our learnings were, um, you know, whatever the devil is doing is a part of God's plan. So for a child of God who is in the will of God, whatever the devil is doing is a part of the, you know, of the um manifestation of God's plan. It's all, it's all connected, everything's working together for our good last last. So if you, once you begin to delight yourself in the Lord, the things that your heart will desire will begin to be in tune with the will of God. And, you know, of course, the Lord will give you, um, what your heart desires. So, yeah, take the light in the Lord and we give you your heart's desires. Commit, commit everything you do to the Lord, trust him and he will help you. He will make your innocence radiate like the dawn and the justice of your cause will shine like the noonday sun. Be still in the presence of the Lord and wait patiently for him to act. Don't worry about evil people, you know, who prosper or fret about their wicked schemes. And I want to bring this into the context of, you know, what we referenced last week, um, regarding the crucifixion of Jesus, um. Don't worry, don't worry, I'm reading this verse again in that, in that light, in that context. If as we're reading, you have any question or anything that is confusing, please let me know, so that we can clearly attend to it, but don't give you here without, um, clarity. Okay, so be still in the presence of the Lord and wait patiently for him to act. Don't worry about evil people who prosper. If you think about it in the context of the Jewish council who were, um, uh, what's the word, hounding Jesus and wanted to crucify him, they were prospering, you know, there was a prospering in their hearts. But don't worry about these evil people who are prospering, you know, or fret from their wicked schemes, because again, this, this, this thing that they are plotting, this, um, plan that they are, you know, that they are doing, that they are planning, it is again an instrument in the hands of the Lord. Okay, so, um, stop being angry, turn from your rage, do not lose your temper, it only leads to harm. For the wicked will be destroyed, for those who trust in the Lord will possess the land. Soon the wicked will disappear, though you look for them, they will be gone. The lowly will possess the land and they will live in peace and prosperity. Now, to the part where, you know, was referenced, and it's, it's always important that when you read or study the Bible, you know, you always go verses before, in fact, it's possible chapters before, so that you get full context of what that verse means. Because there's no verse that is, that has an isolated meaning. Okay, so, um, twelve. The wicked plot against the godly, they snarl at them in defiance, but the Lord just laughs. For he sees their day of judgment coming. I don't know, did that bring understanding to anyone? Um, oh, just read, didn't bring understanding to anyone, especially regarding Psalms two verses four that says, he who sits in heaven shall laugh. The Lord shall hold them in derision, derision, rather. This one says, the wicked plot against the godly, they snarl at them in defiance, but the Lord just laughs. For he sees their day of judgment coming. The, the, um, doesn't that make sense to anyone? I'm coming to hear.
Yes, I.
Uh, thank you. Okay, so, yeah, does that make sense to anyone? Um, the connection or the reason for the laughter, the, what birthed that laughter, does it make sense to anyone? Thank you, Dami, thank you. Okay, so, um, so let's continue. The Lord, he who sits in heaven shall laugh. You know, laugh at their schemes, laugh at their plans, laugh at whatever it is that they were imagining or plotting. Um, the Lord shall hold them in derision. I want us to, why do I keep saying derision, derision? Derision. Okay, so let's go to Strong's Bible, um, or Strong's Dictionary and just read through the meanings of those words. Um. Okay, so he that seated in heaven, the same word for seated here is the same word that was using Psalms one, you know, when he said, um, uh, there's not, or rather, people that sit in the, sit in the council of the ungodly and stand in the way of sinners. Yeah, so it's the same word, means to dwell, so he that dwells in heaven, he that stays in heaven, that makes his abode in heaven. Um, in the heavens, sorry, in the heavens. Um, and this means, um, the higher ether where the celestial bodies revolve, so of course, heavens, heavens. So not just in one place, you know, heaven. And I, I really, I've forgotten what they call it, yes, cartology, I mean, what's um, I, I don't, I don't exactly have full in-depth knowledge, you know, regarding the heavens, first heaven, second heaven and all the heavens, but I'm, um, but I believe, you know, that there is, there are, um, um, levels, so to say, there are levels of stories to, to have. So when I think of the heavens, I just think of story buildings, you know. Um, floor one, floor two, ground floor and all of that. I feel like we are, we are on the ground floor. And then there is floor one, uh, brother, eh, first floor, sorry, second floor, third floor, up to the seventh heaven. I don't know who stays in those places, but anyway, we know that the Lord is the one that created all those spaces anyway, so he, he, um, he can be in all the heavens, basically. And I think that's, that knowledge is good enough for me, where I am right now. Okay, so the heavens, like the heavens, um, shall laugh, so he that sits in heaven shall laugh. Of course, laugh just means really laughter, ha, 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 you know. Um, so the Lord shall have them in derision, is it derision, I'm looking for, and it means um, to deride by implication, as if imitating a foreigner, to speak unintelligibly. Have in derision, laugh, to scorn, so I was right, to scorn, you know, mock, stammering. So, so the picture that just came to my mind now is, um, imagine maybe, uh, somebody that you are not, you're not very, you're not, uh, what's the word? You're not in good terms with, you know, comes to you and he's saying, eh, so this thing that I said now, see, I'm going to go and report you to you know, A, B, C and D, and I'm going to, are you, are you, okay, I'm trying to paint a better picture, you are the M D C E O of your company. And somebody doesn't know, and then they come to you and they're saying, oh, see, I want to, I want to, um, um, speak to, or maybe you attend to a customer and they're saying, oh, I want to speak to the manager, you know. Is this how you people doing this company? Um, I'm going to, I'm going to report you to your boss and I'm going to make sure that they fire you. I have already heard that this person is a troublemaker, you know. There is a way that you will laugh, even if you don't laugh in front of the person, there's a way that you will laugh in your heart, like, is this one okay? Excuse me, I am the owner of this company, you want to report me to me? You know, there's a scornful laugh that just comes out of your mind, like, if I, if I, had it been, I know you, you know, um. There's a way that you, or, or maybe, or maybe the person is now, maybe you beg the person again and again, like, okay, sorry, we'll help you find a solution, we'll help you, you know, um, um, treat it, and the person just goes on and on and they are just. I feel like that's what that word means, you know, in, in practical sense. The Lord is just looking at them and saying, uh, you don't know anything, you don't know that at the end of the day, it's still part of my plan, you know. We're going to crucify Jesus, we're going to get, release your powers, and we're going to crucify him, so to say, the Lord, you know, the King of Jews, he should come and save himself. That's how I feel, you know, that's, that's what I think of us, um, uh, what's the word? That's the energy that the verse, that's the vibe that it gives, you know, they're just. Yeah, I'm sorry, but it's a bit dramatic in my head. Um, so, yeah, he that sits in heaven la, will laugh, the Lord shall have them in derision. Then, now let's go to verse five, then he shall speak to them in his wrath. The laughter was not because he was having fun, quote unquote, you know, because he knew that at the end of the day, there is a correlation, I beg your pardon, between their plans and his plan. There is a helping that your foolishness will do to his plan. And so he just laughed scornfully. It's not a laughter of, eh, you're, you're teasing a baby. It's a, it's a kind of laugh that you laugh at your enemy when you know you already won, you know. Um, then verse five says, then he shall speak to them in his wrath and distress them in his deep displeasure. Those are heavy words, like, let's go to Strong's, you know, dictionary to see what it means. Timmy, let me know when you're able to come up with it to read for us. Um, so that I can handle this bit into you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, oh, you ready? Okay, okay. Um, um, yeah, so verse five, do you want to go ahead and read, so, so what you just do is so that we can collapse time, um, read. So you do, you do a bit of teaching, so read the entire verse in Strong's, in Strong's Bible, then, um, interpret the words as you see them written.
Okay, you mean I should read it first, then?
Yes, 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 the, the interpretation. So speak wrath, vex, um, displeasure, you just interpret it, everything at once like that.
Okay, so verse five says, then shall he speak unto them in his wrath and vex, and vex them in his sore displeasure. So speaks is, um, of words to speak in a destructive sense. To subdue, to answer to a point, to declare, to promise, to say, to speak, to realize, to talk, to subdue, to think and to utter. So that is speak, then wrath says, um, from the rapid breathing in passion. To face angrily before containers forbearing long suffering, nose no trees worthy. Um, vexes, um, palpitates figuratively or positively make, suddenly, astily anxiously amazed dismayed, to get to make, to haste, to give speedily thrust out and trouble to vex. Um, lastly, displeasure says, burning of anger sore display your feariness, fury, fierce, wrathful.
Thank you, thank you, Timmy. Okay, so that verse five is quite, he's like all the negative words, all the negativity that can come from the Lord, you know, regarding a um, regarding an entity. It's just like, ah, the Lord is really angry at these people, the Lord is, first he laughs at them scornfully. And then he, you know, speaks, after he has laughed, he will now speak to them in his wrath, in his anger. He will, you know, talk to them in his anger and vex them in his sore displeasure. Basically, that verse is just saying that the Lord is not happy with their plans, but because he's the Lord and he's sovereign, and because his plans will not be thwarted. Whatever is that they are planning, he will fine tune it, you know, um, just like the, um, the history of Balam and, um, uh, the people of Israel, when, I think it's, it's not Balak that told him to go and curse, you know, curse the people of Israel, they offered sacrifices, offered a lot of sacrifices at different points and the Lord did not say, oh, don't, you know, don't, um, if you like, curse them, nothing will happen. That did not happen. Yes, he went on the mountain, yes, the sacrifices, he did it, but the curse not turned to blessing. That's a typical example of how the Lord, you know, uses the plans of the enemy as an instrument in his own plan. So they, they had plans to kill Jesus. They didn't even know why they were doing it. They didn't know why, um, it was, I mean, because when, when it was in time, think about it, if you read the Gospels, when it was in time for Jesus to be crucified, every time that they would almost catch him, he would escape. Every time that they would, you know, um, want to arrest him, there would just be a way for him to escape. That's the thing that, first of all, the Lord is sovereign, and even though Jesus was, you know, um, uh, God made flesh, he was still a powerful human, so to say. He could have called down fire, he could have called, I mean, he even mentioned it himself, he could have called down his angels and said, you know what, it's not yet my time, and this one wants to stress me. Oh, yeah, everybody, let's fire, just come and make your heads roast. He could have done that, you know. But that's just the, the escaping from time to time is a proof that he has these powers. He could have escaped. He would have been on the cross and said, before you will kill me. Oh, yeah, Avatar, um, Mending, let the air just whirl around you and strangle you to death. His Lord, he has the power and the authority, he could have done that, you know. But because it was necessary for him to die anyway, it was God's plan for him to die anyway. So whatever Judas did, whatever the Jewish council did, whatever the, um, teachers of the Lord did, whatever the emperor did, it was all, they were all instruments, you know, to fulfill God's plans. So the, the, um, scornful laughter of the Lord in verse three, or rather in verse four, was because, first of all, I mean, he was angry that they were going to not accept him. Because the idea of them killing Jesus, killing Jesus wasn't just because, oh, they didn't like him, I mean, oh, um, they knew that it was time for him to die, so he's like, oh, the way Abraham wanted to sacrifice Isaac, like, I love you, son, but you know, the Lord has just asked for you right now, so I need to go and sacrifice you. It wasn't that, that wasn't the case. It was that they hated him, they rejected his message, and because of that, they rejected the Lord. So it was enough cause for anger, like, look at the people that I, that I've been fighting for since the days, since the day of Abraham. See, people that I've been rescuing and bringing out of slavery since the days of Moses. Is this all you will have to return to me? Now, wow, now for now, ah, you know, the Lord scornfully laughed at them. And then in verse five, you know, he, he dealt with them, he, he showed his displeasure towards them. So verse six. Um, I'm really excited about this verse six because it, it is, it is very hope-filled. Before I read verse six, can people paste Matthew three seventeen, um, Mark eleven, Mark one, one and eleven, Matthew three versus seventeen, Mark one verse one and verse eleven. Luke three twenty-two, John one eighteen and Acts three, Act thirteen thirty-three. Matthew three seventeen, Mark one, one and eleven. Um, Luke, thank you, Dami, thank you so much. Luke three twenty-two, John one eighteen, Act thirteen thirty-three. And if another person can help us, Hebrews one five and five five. Because somebody remember that we, we read Hebrews five five last week. Who remembers? I mean, did we? Oh, I think that was romance. I think that was romance. I apologize. Sorry, I was about to start to feel myself like, oh, my God, I didn't even know that. Not that messy. Okay, um, yes, thank you. So, um, John one eighteen, Acts thirteen thirty-three, Hebrews one five and five five. Thank you, Dami, thank you, Dami, thank you, Bola. Um. Can we have John one eighteen and Hebrews one five? Thank you, Maju Sinola, thank you. Okay, so, um, this verse six says, yet I have set my king on my holy hill of Zion. Now, if you read this verse in N K J V, you see that N K J V has a way of, um, capitalizing the pronouns and um, names that belong to the Lord, you know, Elohim, by, by Elohim, I mean, God the Father, the Son and the Spirit. Um, so it says, yet I have set my king, you see that my king, you see that the my is in capital. The king as well is in capital, that's telling that the king was talking about was not David, you know, and it was in Solomon as well, um. On my holy hill of Zion. So in spite of all their trouble, all their, you know, eh, ah, there's a word in Yoruba, God. In spite of all the, um, camaraderie that they are showing, in spite of all the, um, um, there's a word for it, I mean, I really don't want to say the Yoruba, but like, in spite of all the drama that they are causing, in spite of all the plots, the imaginations, the wicked things, their schemes, in spite of them all, you know, um. And after I finish laughing at them, I will now show them that the king, my own, my own son that is going to be king. Eh, I have set him on my holy hill of Zion. And the reason why I want us to be very attentive to these verses is because as much as it is about Jesus, it is also about us. It is also about us, and you will see, we'll see, we'll see how, you know, in, in a short while. So I have set my king, um, on my holy hill of Zion. There's something that happens in Zion that the world cannot understand. There's something that happens in Zion. Zion is not just Jerusalem that we know now. Zion is a place in God. Zion is the city of God, is where God dwells, is where God lives, you know, um, we are all Zion. You can put it like that, we are all Zion, you know. But also, any place that has been consecrated to host God is Zion. And I, I want us to, you know, drink that as water, I want us to digest it. Any place that has been consecrated to host God is Zion, is the city of God. Okay, so, um, yeah, let me just be reading, you know, what we have paced, thank you very much, um, lady and gentleman for indulging me. Um, so, yes, Psalms thirty-seven, but, or rather, Matthew three seventeen. And suddenly a voice came from heaven saying, this is my beloved son in whom I will please. Remember that this verse says that, you know, I have set my king on my On my holy hill of Zion. The Lord is, the Lord is saying that this king that is coming, this plan that you are planning that cannot work, eh? Let me tell you why. It's because this king that is coming to reign, this king that is coming after the other, uh um um from the, from the descent. That's the word, of David, you know, this king that is set up, that that will come in in the fullness of my image, yeah? I have set him on my holy hill in Zion, meaning all your plans and your plots, hmm? The the best that they can do is to help my plan, is to is to assist my king, okay? So whatever that people think you're planning, you're doing, you want to kill, you want to crucify, you want to stab him, collect all the blood and the water in his body. Grossly murder him, yeah? All those plans, the best that can happen with them. Is that, you know, they will help my plan. Okay, so suddenly a voice came from heaven saying, this is my beloved son in whom I am well pleased. That's Matthew three seventeen, a confirmation of the fact that this king that was referred to in Psalms two verses um six is the Lord Jesus. Okay, so Luke three twenty-two. And the Holy Spirit descended in bodily form like a dove upon him. And a voice came from heaven which said, you are my beloved son in whom I am well pleased. Are you seeing now that this this chapter was about Jesus? Was about Jesus. Now, um Hebrews five five, this is why Christ did not exalt himself to become high priest. No, he was chosen by God who said to him, you are my son. Today I have become your father. If you go to um. Let me see. Okay, so this act, act thirteen thirty-three, or rather, Hebrews five five is also referenced in in verse seven of chapter two. I hope I'm not confusing us. In this same act two, we're still on act two, we're just reading references in the future, you know. Where those those um that word came to pass, where he, the the words were manifested. So you are my son. Today I have become your father. By the way, let me branch to quickly explain. Um, Jesus is a son of God, not just by conception. You know, but also by obedience. He he is a son of God, not just because he was conceived, you know, through um um the Holy Spirit. But also because he obeyed the Lord, like there was a, there was a pattern before him that he followed. So he is a son of God by conception, by obedience and by resurrection. That is, that is a very important um um point, or some some very important points I want us to note and keep dearly to heart. Jesus is a son of God, not just from birth. I was um. I think I was reading, or somebody was reading a book. Yeah, someone was reading a book, you know, um um early this morning to a group of people. And um that's not even the best way to put it. We were reading a book. We were reading a book, yeah, early this morning. Um, and Rabbi Esther, I'm sure we know her, um she was one reading, you know, the portion of the book. And I remember that one of the things that stood out for me was how um somebody is not just a son, you know, by birth. You can, you can um give birth to a child now. And um, yes, by birth, that person is your child. But mannerisms, gestures, behavioral patterns will not yet kick in. There are people that know you and know each other, know that, oh, that's the son of so so and so, that's the daughter of so so and so, because we know that this person gave birth to this person. But if somebody sees that child somewhere else and sees you somewhere else, they may not be able to marry, you know, your your family ties. But once that child starts to grow and learn your character. And pick one or two cues from how you have related with them, then you, people will have to say, oh, no DNA needed, you know. We can see the way this person walks, like, just like his father. We can see the way this person talks, folds her hands behind her back, just like her mother, you know. So, yes, by birth, you, this person is your child, but also as the person is maturing and growing. He, the person also becomes your child. I don't know if that makes sense. And that's why even even people who were adopted, who, you know, children who were adopted. At some point, if they are, if they were adopted at um um maybe infanthood. At some point, they start to behave like they are, they are, like they are um adopted parents, sorry, what, or foster parents. You know, because of what they have learned. So Jesus is a son of God, yes, by conception, but also. By obedience and also in resurrection. Okay, so um, yeah, so act thirteen thirty-three. Um, God has fulfilled this for us, their children. I want us to read thirty-two actually, because who whose children? These things are very important. Um. Let me see, let me see, let me see, act thirteen thirty-two. If you get there before me, please just quickly paste it so that to save us time. Actually, don't paste it, because I feel like it may not be thirty-two that we need to read from. Um. Aha, I was right. Okay, so I think this was, um, is this Steven now? No, Paul. Okay, this was Paul. Okay. Yeah, so I think this was Paul in the. In Cyprus. Yeah, this was Paul in Cyprus. Um, no, sorry, Pesea. Paul in Pesea. Uh, where do we start from now? Okay, so he was, Paul was literally preaching the gospel, yeah? Um, now let me read from twenty-six so that will give us context. We should have read from one, but we don't have that time. So from twenty-six. Paul says, men and brethren, sons of the family of Abraham. So you see that we cannot take verses in isolation. This chapter says. God has fulfilled this for us, their children. If you don't know who the us are and who the dear is. You may not necessarily understand the verse. So men and brethren, sons of the family of Abraham, of course, we now see what this verse means. Um, and those among you who fear God, to you the word of this salvation has been sent. For those who dwell in Jerusalem and their rulers, because they did not know him, nor even the voices of the prophets, which were read every Sabbath. I fulfill them in condemning him. Paul was just literally physically saying, um, yes, people are seeds of Abraham. But you are not children of Abraham. There's a difference, you know. Um, you can be a son or a a an offspring of somebody, but not be a child of that person. And I pray that the Holy Spirit gives us understanding. Um. Um, we must have heard cases where people would say, you look nothing like your dad, or you look nothing like your mom, you know. Even though, this is the type of people that brought you out from your loins, um you. There is no manner, there is no correlation between the way that you people behave. Not just by looks, but like in manners, in character, there is no correlation. And that's why there was a, there was a part in the, in the gospels where Jesus said. You know, um, you are the child of your father, the devil. And they were very offended, like, excuse me, we are, we are not slaves, we are not. We are descendants of Abraham. They said it with boldness. If somebody finds that verse, please help me post it, you know. They say with boldness, like, excuse me, do you? Do you know what it even meant in those days to be, to be a Jew? Like, they were very proud, you know, like, we are not slaves, we are descendants of Abraham, excuse me. There is an inheritance for us that we met because we are children of Abraham. And Jesus did not refute them in that sense. He said. I want to paraphrase him. You know, yes, you are, you are descendants of Abraham, true that. But excuse me, men and brethren, you are still children of the devil. Because if you were descendants of Abraham, you would, you would accept me, you would. Um, believe in me. Because Abraham did believe in me. Before Abraham was, I am. I think that's where the verse came, you know. And then they were very embarrassed and unoffended, because they felt like, who is this man that? Did not, that is from one small town called Nazareth, coming to tell us eh, we are not, you know, we are slaves. Do you know where we are? Do you know where we came from? Do you know who our forefather was? Like, don't play, you know, but. Jesus Christ was making a reference to the state of their obedience, to the state of their understanding. In understanding and obedience, they were children of the devil, because anybody who does not serve Christ is an antichrist, period, period. I feel like my Gen Z lingua is getting, you know, um better and better with each new day, glory. Yeah, um. Jesus was saying that even though you are, your bloodline, you know, has the DNA of Abraham. Your heart and the state of your spirit doesn't, because the, it is the devil's plan to. Threat the plan of God. And the idea of them not receiving him, you know, in that sense, in that season. Um, was a testament to where their hearts was. So even though they had washed. Their vessels before, you know, um eating, even though they washed their hands, even though they read the Torah, even though they. Um, do all the things that Moses said they should do and do not do all the things that Moses said they should not do, their heart was still not in alignment with the Lord. So they were reading the laws, they were reading everything, digesting everything. Yet, when the manifestation of that law came, they were blind, they did not see it. So the sins of the, of the, you know, Pharisees was not even that, maybe they didn't know God, or um maybe they didn't believe in God, or they just hated Jesus. It was that they had become so engrossed in the letters that they, they did not give chance for the spirit to be revealed to them. And as Babel says, you know, the letter kills, was the spirit that brings understanding and brings life. Okay, so let's continue. Um. Uh, for those who dwell in Jerusalem and their rulers, because they did not know him, nor even the voices of the prophets, which were read every Sabbath. I fulfill them in condemning him. Are are we seeing now? And though they found no cause for death in him. They asked Pilate that he should be put to death. Now, when they had fulfilled all that was written concerning him, they took him down. Of course, he means Jesus Christ. They took him down from the tree and laid him in a tomb. But God raised him from the dead. He was seen for many days by those who came up with him from Galilee to Jerusalem, who are witnesses to the people. Thirty-two, and we declare to you glad tidings, that promise which was made to the fathers. Now thirty-three, that was posted. God has fulfilled this for us, their children. So we, we, that, that we're on this call right now. We are children of Abraham by covenant. If you trace your DNA back, I promise you did not go to Abraham. It's probably maybe um Esau, or did I say Esau? Sorry, Ishmael, you know. Or all of those other nations that Abraham went to fight, to rescue lots. I'm just, I'm just kidding. Um, but. By bloodline, I don't think we have any ties to Abraham. But thank God for the, for the um life of Jesus. Thank God for the sacrifice of Jesus that has made it possible for us to enter into that covenant. It is, it is really, really, really interesting, you know. I I want, I want someone to just um take a moment to say, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus, for the new covenant that we now have. Thank you, Jesus. 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 All right, so um thirty-three. God has fulfilled this for us, their children. That's the children of Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, you know, that bloodline. We now have a share, we now have a claim to that inheritance, you know, um in that. How did God fulfill this promise? He raised up Jesus. As it is also written in the second stone, you are my son. Today I have become your father. Are we seeing now? Today I have begotten you. Today I have become your father. Seeing now, are we seeing? Are we seeing? Are we seeing? Um, I think. Okay, can we still hear me? Can we still hear me? Praise God. Okay, great. Great, thank you. Um, yes, and I hear raising from the dead, no more to return to corruption. He has spoken thus. I I will give you the sure mercy of David. Therefore, he says in another Psalm, you will not allow your holy one to see corruption. You know, if you, if you read that entire chapter, you just see the fulfillment of the Psalms there. So, yes, um, the, the. Psalms two, Psalms two verses, is it six now that we are on, or seven? Uh. Sorry, I've left, I've left my. Okay, yes, six. Um, so yet I have set my king on my holy hill of Zion. You know, there is a, there is a, you know how you pour concrete into um um iron and, you know, wood. To build a mass. I don't know if that's, that's a word. Please, the constructing engineering people in the house, don't come for my head. Um, I'm only, I'm only trying my best, you know. Anyway, um. That verse is saying, it is, it is cast in stone. Yes, that's the word. It is cast in stone, you know. I have poured cement, mixed it with sand, poured it, allowed air to dry it. It is now giddiba. I have set my king on my holy hill of Zion. I have set my king, I have set Jesus, you know, on Zion. It it is, his kingdom cannot be shaken. That's what it means. I. In this city, in this my city, in this Zion, the kingdom that I've given my son Jesus, nothing can shake it. And that should give us hope. Because if there is a, if there's any chance, it was minus zero point zero 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 one percent chance. That the kingdom can be taken away from Jesus, then we should be worried. You know, we should be worried because um, you know, what happens to our faith? Like, Baba, what am I supposed to do if it's possible that the kingdom of Jesus can be shaken? Ah, war onto us. But thank God that, you know, the the Lord stands by his word. He's able and he's willing. To keep his word, to keep his word. Okay, so um. Which one have we not read? John one eighteen. Um, no one has seen God at any time. The only begotten son. Who is in the bosom of of the Father, he has declared him. That verse is um, it beats, what's the word now? There, there's a little bit extra meaning to it than what we can see. Um. Jesus is the one that has seen God. We're not doing, we're not doing study on John today, so I don't want us to digress a lot. But yeah, Jesus is the one who has seen God, what, just the only one who has seen God. And he has come to represent the God that we have not seen to us. So that we can see the God that is, um, what's the word now? Jesus is the only one that has seen God. So he has come to represent God. That we cannot see, that we cannot see here, so that we can see God in him. Praise God. Um, and. It was not, it was not just enough for Jesus to come and say, oh, I'm the son of God, oh, God is my father, oh, it's my daddy, you know. God also declared him. There was a, there was a public affirmation. And I feel, I believe that it's a, I'm not very sure, but I think it's a Jewish. Tradition, you know, at some point for fathers to declare their sons, you know, to say, this person is my son. I feel like there's a rite that they go through, maybe like a, um, the way you have all those, sorry, I watch a lot of epic movies. Maybe there's a fight or there's a tournament or something that they have to win. And after, you know, they come and they win it, then the father just comes and says. You know, I am Lord A, B, C and D, and this is my son. I feel like that is a tradition in, you know, in those times. Uh, but yeah, there was a declaration, there was a public declaration that the Lord had to do regarding Jesus, to also affirm that he is his son. And, yeah, so Hebrews one five, the last one that we're reading. Um, for God never said to any angel what he said to Jesus. You are my son. Today I have become your father. And again, God said, I will be his father and he will be my son. So there is a lot of lovey dovey father-son relationship that's going on, you know, in these verses and a lot of affirmation. Not just for Jesus's sake, but for our sake, so that we can indeed believe that Jesus was sent from God and he is the son of God. Okay, so um I have set my holy hill, I have set my king, rather, on my holy hill of Zion. Um, let me see if we need to read that in Strong's dictionary, hmm? Oh, wow. Okay, so looking at Strong's dictionary, that verse six, I have set. That set there means, um, I tell you, I don't make these things up. God is just really, truly, truly, you know. Helping us understand. Set there means um. To pour out especially a libation or to cast metal. Are you people seeing that? Are you people seeing that? I'm not the one, really. By analogy, to anoint a king. So when um. When uh somehow came to anoint, you know, David. Or to 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 confirm that David was the one that God chose, you know, Jesse listed out his sons, brought them out. And son one, son two, son three, son four, like, no, 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 this is not, this, this is not the person. They are all standing in the ground, they are, you know. They are men, but this is not the man. Um, and when David eventually came, there was a right. Quote unquote, that had to be done for, for David to be affirmed a king, you know. Um. There was a pouring of the oil to, to confirm. And I really want that, one that's sinking to our, to our hearts. There was a pouring of the oil to confirm that David was the king. And of course, because Jesus is the king, and it's interesting because. And of course, because Jesus is the king, and it's interesting because the Lord did not um abolish the law. You know, indeed, he came to fulfill the law. Because if Jesus had not been anointed, he, his kingship would have been questioned. Um I think it's Acts, um is it Acts two thirty-eight? Act something, child, where he said, you know, how, how God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the Holy Ghost and with power. For every king in Israel, there had to be an anointing as a right, as a ritual for them to be, you know, proclaimed king. Well, it's not just, and that's why before the kings, they were judges, you know, they were judges, they were priests. Um and at some points, the, the priests would double as judges, E, E G, Samuel. You know, but, but there was no king until Saul. So even Saul had to be anointed. Um, um David had to be anointed, Solomon had to be anointed. That's why even eh Adon, Adonijah, you know, when he claimed himself king, there was no anointing that happened. So in, 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 that in itself is, is already a um recipe for failure. So kings in Israel had to be anointed. And just to confirm again that Jesus is the final king that was coming to rule, that. You know, the king that the scepter will not depart from, his hometown people's place. You know, there had to be an anointing as well, there had to be an anointing. Um but yeah, you know, by, by analogy. Excuse me, to anoint a king, cover, melt, offer, cost, to pour out, to set up, so it is cast in stone once again. You know, when the Lord says, I have set my king on my holy hill, on my holy hill in Zion. It is cast in stone. I have, like, nothing can, can uncast that stone. Nothing can melt, you cannot, you cannot carry cast now and go and melt it and say, okay, now I have my cement back, I have my water back. That's not gonna happen. The answer you can do is to break it, you know, into smaller rocks. But you cannot, you cannot um, um. Get the diluted cement and sand and I don't know, I don't know the sand in it, but whatever the solution is, you cannot get it back. You know, from that casting stone. So he's saying, I have set this thing in this cast. And that's, that's, I've established his kingdom forever, that's what it just means. I've established his kingdom forever in Zion. Okay, so um yes, king, I mean, king is king, um holy is, of course, holy consecrated. Um here, mountain, Zion is the city of God, of course, um the heavenly Jerusalem. So yes, I have set my, I have set my king on my holy hill of Zion. In fact, the way Anka Jamie puts it, he says, yes, I have set. So in spite of all the rubidion that is going on, I eventually use the word. In spite of all the rubidion that is going on, in spite of all their plans, in spite of all their imaginations, in spite of all the things that they want to do to my son. You know, or to my, to my purpose, yet, as in, they don't know that this king. This kingdom that I'm about to establish through Jesus, it is cast in stone. It is cast in stone, nothing can shake it, nothing can uncast it from this stone. It is cast in stone. So yet, like, even though. Our past still, regardless, nevertheless, all the more, you know. I have set my king, I have set my king. I have set my king on my holy hill in of Zion, on my holy hill of Zion. And that is a reminder to us that we are from this city. Because of the covenant that we now are a part of, we are from this city. So if there's nothing that can shake the kingdom of God, if there's nothing that can shake the kingship of Jesus. There is nothing that can shake our place in him. And I want somebody to just, you know, soak that in. If there is nothing that can shake the kingdom of God. There is nothing that can shake our faith in him, that can shake our inheritance in him. So if the Lord has said, you know, um. Come unto me, oh, either labor, and I will be laid, and I'll give you rest, then it is cast in stone. If the Lord has said, you know, um, 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 what's that John today sixteen again? For whatsoever shall believe, you know, um shall not perish, will have eternal life, then it is cast in stone. If the Lord has said, you know, if you um believe the Lord your God, believe rather, what's that Romans? Romans nine. Romans ten, nine to ten. Um for the mouth, you know, confession is made unto salvation, with the hearts, you know, man believes. Um, I really want to read it. Because this, this skin is not working. Mm-hmm, Romans ten. Yes, nine to ten, yes, that if you confess with your mouth, you know, that the Lord Jesus, that. If you confess with your mouth to Lord Jesus and believe in your heart that God has raised him from the dead, you will be saved. But with the heart one believes unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation. In fact, with eleven, for the scripture says, whoever believes on him will not be put to shame. Twelve, I really know where this is going, for there is no distinction between Jew and Greek, for the same Lord is overall. For, for the same Lord over all is reached to all who call upon his name. And thirteen, whoever calls upon the name of the Lord shall be saved. If it is a promise that has come with the resurrection of Jesus, even if it's a promise that has come with the life of Jesus. Then it is cast in stone. Is somebody listening? Can somebody hear me? If it's a promise that has come with the life of Jesus, with the resurrection of Jesus, then it is cast in stone. Nothing can shake it. And I feel like this answers the question of, you know, um if you, and I really don't like to go into it because it needs a, it needs a lot of um. Teaching for proper understanding, so that people don't take it out of context or misuse that, that, that um reality, you know. But nothing can separate you from the love of God, that's what it just means. Nothing can take away, can, can take you away from the covenant of Jesus. Nothing. I think it's a romance, no, I can't remember the exact verse now, but they were saying, you know, I think it's Romans eight. Yeah, I think it's Romans eight. Um that it says, you know, not life, not death, not um. Oh, please, 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 will you spare help me? Hmm. Um. Um. Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, it's ritual. Romans eight thirty-eight, for I am persuaded. That neither death nor life, nor angels, nor principalities, nor powers, nor things present, nor things to come. Nor heights, nor depth, these things are very huge, heavy things to be calling, you know. Nor any other created thing shall be able to separate us from the love of God which is in Jesus Christ our Lord. Because why? It is cast in stone. The Lord has set his, his king, you know. On his holy hill of Zion. And so because of that, our righteousness is cast in stone. Our validation is cast in stone, our justification is cast in stone, our sanctification is cast in stone. Our salvation is cast in stone. As long as it comes with the resurrection of Jesus. As long as it comes with the life of Jesus, as long as it comes with the covenant of Jesus. Then it is cast in stone. It is cast in stone. Nothing can separate us from that covenant. As long as we believe and we have confessed, nothing can separate us, nothing, 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 nothing. Imagine all the every, everything that Paul was listening in Romans. Not life, not death, hello? Not principalities, not powers, nothing can separate us from that life. Nothing can separate us from that life. And I want us to just begin to remit our max and just thank the Lord for, you know, his um. His kingdom that we are now a part of, his, 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 the life that he has given to us, his life. The life that he has given to us, you know, the, what we now enjoy in him, what we now have access to. The life that he has given to us. Let's just begin to bless the name of the Lord, because it is not by our works. As we have seen, it is not, it is not by anything that we have done or do not do. It is not. In fact, I put it to you, it is not because you have not told a lie, or because you have not sinned. It is not because you, you come from, you know, a royal lineage. It is not because you have um. You have servants in your house, or you were born with diamond spoon. It is not because you, you, you have it easy, you've had it easy, it's not even because you've suffered. You know, it is not because you have gone through a Lord for the name of the Lord. It is nothing that we have done. It is nothing that we have done, because even before the foundations of the earth were laid. The plan of God was to reconcile us back to himself, was to first of all, uh ensure that we, we stay in his presence forever. And when we use our own hands to spoil that plan, the Lord ensured that there was another eternal plan. To ensure that we are still with him, we are still with him, and all we had to do was believe. All we had to do was believe, all, all we had to do was believe, believe in the Lord your God and you will be saved. All we had to do was believe. Isn't it, isn't it humbling, you know, isn't it humbling to know that? The only path that we had to play in our salvation was our sin. And our belief after. The only path that we had to play was our sin and our belief. Isn't it interesting that even before, you know, the Lord formed, even, even, e- even before our great, 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 great times. Fifteen, sixteen grandparents, even before they were born, the Lord had already planned to redeem the, to redeem us rather to himself. Even before we were conceived, the Lord already had a plan in place to redeem us back to himself. As, as long as Milene believes, as long as Olango believes, there is a place in me for her, there is a place in me for him. As long as Mariah believes, there is a, there's an inheritance in me for her. That is cast in stone, that nothing can shake. Oh, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Father. 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 Lord, we thank you. 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 Jesus, we give you praise. Jesus, we give you praise. Thank you for your word that has come to us tonight. Thank you for revealing yourself to us in your word. Thank you, Jesus, for the life that we now have access to, that are now empowering us to live. Thank you for the gift of salvation. Thank you for the gift of the Holy Spirit. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. It is nothing that we have done or may do in the future. There is nothing that we can do to earn it. There is nothing, there is nothing. It is purely, solely by grace, solely by grace, solely by grace. And what a privilege it is to be called your own, what a privilege it is to be a part of this covenant. Not because our blood ties are related to that of Abraham, but because you have just in your grace adopted us as your children. Oh, what a privilege it is to learn, to learn of you, and to learn to be like you. Oh, thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father, because what love, what love, what love, what manner of love. What manner of love you have bestowed upon us, that we should be called your children, that as many, to as many who believe, to as many who believe. We have the rights, we have the rights, not that we earned it, but you have just given us as a gift, we have the right to be called your son. As in the son of the God of the universe, the sovereign king. It is such a privilege, oh God. It is such a privilege, it is such a privilege, it is such a blessing, we do not take it for granted. It is such a blessing, it is such a blessing, it is such a blessing to be a part of this kingdom. To have our place in you, to have our place in you, to have our place in you, to not be wondering whether or not we'll be accepted. But that to know without a doubt that we have a sure place in you. That every time that we come into your kingdom, every time that we come into your presence, because we are already in your kingdom. Anytime that we come into your presence, there is space for us there, we are always wanted, always needed, always wanted. Oh, thank you, Father, because we are your beloved. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. That not, not even circumstances, not even, you know, trials and, and tribulations can take us away from this law, from this covenant. Lord, we thank you. Lord, we thank you. Thank you for your son, Jesus. Thank you for the life that you empowered him to be, because it is in that light that we can find light. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus, for, for agreeing to sacrifice yourself. For agreeing to be our eternal atonement. Oh, thank you, Father. 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 Thank you, Father, because your, 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 your stance concerning us. When it comes to the plans of the enemy, we always be the scornful laugh, because yet you have set us, oh God. You have set us, you have set us on your holy hill of Zion. Thank you, thank you, because in you we can also scorn at the enemy. Thank you, because in you we can also laugh and put the enemy in derision. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, because we are, we are, we are, we can be, because Jesus is. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father, because we can be, because Jesus is. Oh, thank you, sweet Holy Spirit, for empowering us to live that life. Thank you, Lord. 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 Thank you, because nothing can shake this kingdom. And because of that, nothing can shake our place in you. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. For in Jesus' name we are prayed. For in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen, amen, amen. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions or anything that they want to share, anything that they learned. Um that they want to, you know, just remind us of before um. We go off the call tonight. Um. Okay, I'll take that as none. Okay, so tomorrow, um of course we continue again. Let me see, hopefully we can finish Psalms two. Ah, I'm really trying to not make any promises. But hopefully, 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 if we come in early and start early, um we may be able to. May be able to finish Psalms two tomorrow, but I look forward to uh. Yeah, sorry, my other device went off again. Okay, I saw saying that um tomorrow we go again, you know. Um if we join in early, we can cover a lot. Um and I really hope that we um have been. We have been blessed. That sounded like cliche in my ears, but I really hope that, you know. We have been enlightened, yeah, that's the word, because I have, and I really hope that it's the same for all of us. Um. It would help if you, before you leave the call, you know, or after you leave the call, just. Write down your highlights, your, your learnings, you know, so that it can be a form of recap even in your own mind. Um because it is pointless for us to have gathered and you are not, you are not learning, basically, or studying. You know, so um it would help if you can, you know, just write the things that you can remember from tonight's. Um class or meeting or T O T, excuse me, um and then make it's a. What's the word now? A sure thing, point of duty, um task. Ensure that you are believing for tomorrow's meeting as well. Um and yeah, come, come ready. And I want us to just intentionally, when, before you go to bed tonight, just thank God again for that life, for access to that life. Because our salvation is just beyond, oh, we're not going to hell, and there's a lot more that is in Christ that we have access to, because we believe, just because we believe. Like, it's, it's, it's crazy, you know, to, to the kind of mind. I mean, even to the young kind of mind, it still is crazy. Like, just because I believe, like, all of these things are mine. Wow, amazing. And it is things, there, there are things that are of eternal relevance. You know, um so it is such a privilege. So just, 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 just thank God intentionally for that. Um I feel like we don't, we don't thank God enough for the gifts of salvation. We just do this casually, although we thank you for the gift of salvation and that of my household, and hence the next thing, not that thank you for food, you know. But like intentionally, just thank God for the gift of salvation and access to this life and for, you know, the sessions. Um and, and pray that tomorrow, even as we gather together again, he will reveal even greater things to us. According to his word. Um thank you very much, everyone. Have a rest all evening and see you.